Good evening, everyone. Time is now seven oh five P. M. and today's date is June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, and we're scheduled for our regular town council meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So two announcements. One, I would like to congratulate the Narragansett High School class of twenty twenty-five. The town council and school committee members were honored to attend the graduation ceremony at the University of Rhode Island. It was a really wonderful event that was put on, and we just want to extend our heartfelt congratulations as they move on to their future endeavors. And, oh, thank you. In addition, before we get started this evening, we would like to have a moment of silence for Mr. William Lawler, Jr. Bill was a proud member of the United States Marine Corps Silent Drill Team at the Eighth and First Barracks in Washington, D. C. He enjoyed returning to visit the barracks and attend the night parade with friends and family. He served in the Presidential Honor Guard during the Eisenhower administration, where he stood guard outside the Oval Office, and accompanied the President to Camp David and the Summer White House in Newport, Rhode Island. He was also big on community service. It was very important to Bill. Bill served as the president of the M. C. Double A during a growth period overseeing building an inpatient treatment center in Danbury, Connecticut, and led the agency to acquire other facilities, helping thousands of people. Bill was appointed chairman of the Ridgefield, Connecticut Recreation Center Building Committee, completing the project on time and on budget. So on behalf of the Narragansett Town Council and the Town of Narragansett, we want to extend our heartfelt condolences to Jill, Susan, and the Lawler family. So please take a moment of silence in his memory. Thank you. So first item on the agenda this evening is, we actually have a, an incredible presentation lined up from the Housing Works Rhode Island. We'd like to welcome Annette Born. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much, council members. Thank you very much, public. I am Annette Born. I'm the Research and Policy Director for Housing Works Rhode Island. We conducted work here, actually, beginning in the fall of twenty twenty-three, that I'm going to walk you through as rapidly as possible so we can also include time for questions. I did want to let you know this presentation will be made available on the town website after. So for those of you who don't know Housing Works Rhode Island, we are a community partner of Roger Williams University. We're located in the Providence campus. We are most well-known for our annual housing fact book, but we also do a fair amount of work with towns. The state calls on us for some analysis of housing affordability, and we produce issue briefs and other publications from time to time. And I just want to do a little shout out. I certainly did not do this by myself. Toby Arment, who is no longer with us, is actually now one of the municipal fellows that the state set up the program. He is actually serving the city in which I live, Cranston. Dr. Pierre Perfjelstad was a consultant to the project. Kylie Hong is here with us, and she worked very hard on all of the presentations. James Hardy is our new research analyst, and this is his first exposure to some of our local work. And of course, Brenda Clement, our director, oversaw everything. So there was a request for proposals from Rhode Island Housing. Public engagement in education was one of those. We responded to, at the time, the Director of Community Development, Mike DeLuca, put together a scope of work. We suggested that we would do, you know, a multitude of things to gather information and to make the public aware of the housing affordability situation in the, in the town. So we conducted focus groups with elected and appointed officials. We put up a website that connected to the town's website. We conducted a townwide survey, and we conducted a series of three public workshops. We actually set up for six, but the ones in June didn't, didn't really get much attend, much participation, so we ran them in September as well. I'm not going to read through these slides. They are going to be made available, but I do just want to, you know, make some points as we go through, but I'm trying to do this as fast as I can. So the final report of the focus groups is on the website, so I would encourage you all to read through that. They, there were three mixed focus groups, but then for those members who were unable to attend those sessions, we conducted one-on-one interviews. Some common themes, the desirability of the town is pretty apparent to everybody. Whoops, there's the little, it's not showing up, but, so, I'm seeing it on my hand, but I'm not seeing it up there. The town's desirability is apparent to everybody. There is a shortage of affordable homes, both long-term affordable homes and just affordable homes that are market-priced. There is obviously a market for short-term rentals, and their home prices continue to increase. The twenty twenty-four median-priced home in Narragansett is now eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which would suggest an income needed of about two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in order to purchase that home and pay only thirty percent of your income for it. Members who were interviewed all, all were concerned about the shrinking of the permanent population, particularly for young and low and moderate-income wage earners, and, you know, also the crisis of affordability for some older residents. I can tell you, from having worked in a number of the communities across the state, these are not, these are not, these are not unknown in other towns as well. So there was a concern that members of the community may not know what affordable housing looks like, that there may be still stigma still attached to housing that was built in the nineteen-sixties, and then, you know, the practical difficulties of land and coastline. So the website had dedicated content on it, and including the survey, which you had seven hundred and seventy-five responses. It was, it was really quite amazing. Mike, at the time, didn't think we'd even crack a few hundred, so it was great. That's just a little bit above five percent of the town's population. So this is going to be difficult since the pointer isn't really showing up. Oh, there it is. Okay. All right. So I'm just going to point out here, again, this is not unusual. About eighty-eight percent, almost, of the respondents own their own home, while really only seventy-one percent of residents own their own homes. People who responded, actually, more than a third of the people who responded to the survey actually do rent property to others, but they are also year-round residents. So there are people in the town who also rent to others. Not surprising to all of you probably is the number of people who have lived in the town for over twenty years. And then, again, similar to the, to the more ownership than what is the town's census data, the age of respondents, fifty-nine percent of the respondents, if you combine over seventy-five and sixty to seventy-five, you know, were older, whereas only about twenty-four percent of the town is actually over sixty-five. However, median household income was pretty much on par with census data. Another kind of result of the people who were taking the survey, almost thirty, well, more than thirty-seven percent of them have no housing payment, which would suggest they are that older cohort with no mortgage. In this, we were really trying to look at, I won't call them excess bedrooms, but larger homes than what maybe a household is wanting at that point. So more than half of the respondents were only two-person households, and they live in homes with three and even four or more bedrooms. Of the respondents who said yes, they'd be interested in creating a potential accessory dwelling unit, the majority of them, about fifty-eight percent, would really prefer for that A. D. U. to be for family or friends. About a quarter of them were willing to really have anyone live in it, and about fifteen percent identified low-income community members as being able to rent. On this, on this slide, the majority of landlords who responded really only rent one prop, they only own one rental property, and the majority of them only have one unit to rent. Landlord rents, this isn't shocking to any of you, during the school year, you know, a bedroom may run about a thousand dollars, maybe a thousand to fifteen hundred. Those numbers jump once you get to summer. I know that technically they are not allowed to be rented per bedroom, but we found this the best way to really get these responses. And you can see this center circle, it's almost about a quarter, we're looking at about a thousand, a thousand to two thousand, two to three, and then over three thousand per bedroom. When we asked about, I'm sorry, did I skip? When we asked about future, I'm missing, housing conversations, there we go. When we asked about house, oof, sorry. I drive better than this, really. Okay. When we asked about, what do you hear in housing conversations here in the, in the town? You know, more than sixty percent said housing is too expensive. You can also throw in the losing families and children. I'm not going to get into the politics of the responses. Here, future personal needs, and this, I think, speaks somewhat to the older population that did respond to this. The majority of the people in this particular response were concerned about housing costs and rising expenses, you know, which could be their medical costs or other things related to age as well. Fourteen percent concerned with, you know, when it's going to be time possibly to need in-home care. Current needs for persons really included, again, housing costs, rising expenses, downsizing, and we heard some of this at some of the, at some of the workshops as well. Older participants who really were interested in staying in town but are simply in, don't have an opportunity to move to someplace else in town. When we asked about, these were statements that you could agree to disagree on a range, so one to five, so anybody in that three is here in that middle column, but the town needs to find ways to facilitate the creation of more homes. Seventy percent of the respondents agreed with that statement. There are housing needs in town, seventy-four percent agreed with that statement. People are also wanting to build more of the kinds of homes that have been built here historically, and they are interested possibly in looking for state and other funding sources that allow for higher levels of funding. It is a common comment that we hear in many of the higher-priced communities that when applications are made for funding, the total development costs in the higher-priced communities, you know, tend to be much higher, so they're not as competitive as some of the more urban communities. And, you know, without having any power over it, I have kind of said, maybe we should do a carve-out for some of those communities, but that means that those dollars will go, they won't go as far. When we launched the workshops, the intention was to really do a series of workshops that work through the history of the town, from village life to modern challenges to facing The village life there, you know, showed that tension between being neighborhoods and communities where people would like to remain into retirement versus the season, the seasonal and economic reality that exacerbates the cost. One specific mention was made of commercial use of housing has changed drastically. Oops, sorry. And the modern-day challenges, it was mentioned that, again, the contemporary housing affordability, we have been using what is called the social determinants of health, which really connects to livability. The reason Narragansett is as desirable as it is is because, you know, people really do have a healthy lifestyle, they have an excellent education system, they have a strong sense of community, and many of them connect to the economy in other places, and you have a beautiful environment. But these are all challenges within the town as well. Again, I'm really going to ask you to refer to this later and just absorb what the participants said. I don't want to run over here. Skipping ahead to future opportunities, we asked what if, and we did, I'm sorry. Planning ahead, here we go. We did look for responses to what kinds of homes people wanted here. We explained what missing-middle housing types are, which are homes that are three units to nine units. If you look at census data, you'll see that there is an overabundance in many communities. Be a household type of single-family, and then it's most economical for developers to build larger buildings of ten or more. So that missing middle refers to a certain kind of a density that many, that appeals to many people. But, you know, change is difficult. It, you know, it's, it's difficult for everybody depending on what the topic is. So, but we are at a time of emergency, really in the region, and we, we hope people can kind of explore, you know, what those things are that could make them more comfortable with the kind of change. I think one of the more exciting things we did in that final workshop is we had people work at tables with maps. They identified those areas of town that they felt could be perhaps developed more. Those are highlighted up there, areas that were caution, and then areas that should be preserved only. So in the final observations, you know, really, in the, in the RFP, it was concerned that people did not want more housing here. And I'm here to say, what I heard was a huge amount of concern and that people do want more housing affordability. They certainly want it, but they want it in a way that maintains that same feel and look of the town. Whether or not that is possible within the real estate market that you have is, it doesn't appear that that could happen, but, but there may be ways that it could happen. I don't know. Future opportunities to consider, there are state and you have a local housing bond. This number-two pathways to removing obstacles has actually now been defunded by the current federal administration, so that money is a loss to Rhode Island. That was three-point-eight million dollars. That's no longer. And then finally, there was a suggestion to organize advocates as an advisory group, and really to help work out some of the key sticking points among private market forces and the provision of affordable homes and the town's environmental limitations. And with that, I thank you. I am available by phone, by email, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. It seems that there were a lot of observations that were made, and I think we're very eager to learn more about the next steps. I know that there's a lot of information that was shared in here, so I highly recommend all residents reach out to this information that will be posted on our website. If you can't find it, please reach out to us directly, and we'll make sure we get it to you. And I do appreciate, you know, you coming forth and sharing a lot of this information. It does sound like education and awareness is a really big part of the problem in order for us to find viable solutions here in Narragansett. I, I think we have an amazing affordable housing committee in town that we're very honored to have working for us. They work hard each month getting together, and I've actually had the honor of attending myself. So, yeah, what I found was very interesting, too, is, is being able to recognize the differences between affordable housing, affordable properties, and low-income housing, that there is very much a difference between the three. And the better that we can educate and build awareness within our own town and around the state, I think more solutions and lesser conflicts will arise, ideally. My ask is still the same ask, if it's possible within the next steps moving forward to get a model of what affordable housing would look like in Narragansett, what it looks like in other cities and towns. I'm sure it's the same request everywhere. But, you know, I also recognize that every city and town is unique, but the needs remain that we need to, we need more affordable housing, especially here in Narragansett. So if we're able to discover more solutions, proposed solutions, how we can better educate our residents, you know, I think we're very open to having more dialogue. So again, thank you for your visit. Does anyone on the council have any questions or comments before we move on? Awesome. Thank you so much. All right. Next item on the agenda is our town manager's update. Jim, I'll pass it off to you.
Good morning, good morning, good afternoon, members of the council and people in the audience and those who are listening from home. A few updates for the week. The Boone Street Market, we have another meeting planned for tomorrow with Boone Street Management, the neighborhood representatives, and the police chief. We had a fun meeting last week here. The fifth-grade class from the Narragansett Elementary School visited Town Hall, and among other things, they participated in a mock town council meeting. It, it was rather entertaining, and they had some very interesting points, and they do pay attention to what, what they hear, for sure. Later this month, June twenty-first, there will be an honorary police swearing-in in the town of Bristol. They will be administering, administering an oath of office to D. J. Daniels to be an honorary police officer. As you may know, D. J. has garnered national attention. He's a thirteen-year-old boy who's been courageously battling brain cancer, and D. J. has a wish to be a police officer and has been recognized by many law enforcement agencies across the United States. All Rhode Island police agencies are invited to stand together on stage and present an agency patch or challenge going to participate in the, in the ceremony for D. J. Narragansett Police will be participating in that. I'd also like to extend the condolences of all the town staff to Jill Lawler and her family upon losing her dad, Bill, after a long, great life. He was truly a patriot. He loved America. He loved serving America and preserving America as a Marine, and our condolences to the family.
Thank you. Does anyone from the council have any questions for Jim? Seeing none. Next is our approval of minutes, and these may be voted on as one motion. Is there a motion to Is there a motion to approve minutes as presented in items B1, B2, and B3?
Motion to approve B1, B2, B3.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have to abstain?
I also am abstaining.
Thank you. And abstention due to absence from those meetings, motion passes 3-0 with two abstentions. Thank you. Next is our open forum public comment for this evening. As a reminder, open forum will be restricted to three minutes time per speaker on any subject matter not on the agenda, and please be orderly and respectful. Is there anyone who wishes to speak for open forum who's signed up?
I have one name on the sign-up, Joe Francina.
My name is Joseph Francina. I live at Six Lauderdale Drive here in Narragansett. Been here just over 20, 23 years now, and the town means a lot to me. I grew up in Rhode Island, moved away for about 12 years, came back, and as our kids left and got jobs out of state, moved away, we were able to move down here to Narragansett 23 years ago or so now. And prices were always high then, and I don't see how they can ever go down because of just the nature of this town. And I'm concerned that the push for affordable housing, which, which is wonderful, but I'm always concerned about who the purchasers will be. And no matter what the price is, because of what we offer here in the sense of a vacation area, and of course, our, our relationship with the University of Rhode Island, we become a second dormitory for them, that, that's not going away. So I don't see how even increasing housing are going to change any of the current status of our housing issue here in Rhode Island, in Narragansett. Because of what is offered, there's so much money to be earned here through rental, and whether it's an ADU or anything else, who will be buying them, who will be using them, there's just too much money to be made, and that's the driving force for our problem here in Narragansett. And I'm not sure how that's going to be fixed, and I'm not sure that the current council are willing to fix them, to be honest with you. But I wanted to offer that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else from the public wish to speak during open forum who did not sign up? Ms. Celebrato?
No.
Oh.
Do you take comment during the reading portion or do we just speak now?
For the second reading, if that's what you're referencing, standard procedure. From the past, as I've learned, that we don't take public comment at that time, but if anyone would like to speak during open forum, they may do so.
Catherine Celebrato, 48 Hills Court. This town council approved a budget that was $73 million plus. It's $2 million more than we actually took in in revenue, so we had to take $2 million from our cash reserves. We have to start generating some more income. Let me say that the sewer lot development fee, when we built our first house in Narragansett in 1991, it was $3,500. It's still $3,500. 35 years later, the lot development fee hasn't gone up, and that's absurd, really. So that really needs to be raised. I also think that the rental registration fee should be raised to $750 a unit. If you do that, then you can waive the fee on all the annual rentals in town, and that includes the subsidized units. People don't seem to realize that. All the PO properties, they pay a per-unit rental registration fee. This is absurd. These are subsidized units. They pay, these people pay 30% of their income for these apartments, and yet PO, a nonprofit, is being charged per unit. It makes no sense at all. A three-bedroom house that's rented to students, I mentioned the sum, it can easily generate over $50,000 a year. So I don't think it's going to hurt them to have their rental registration fee raised to 750, but most importantly, then you can waive all the rental registration fees on all the annual rentals. Stanley's going to love that one. Okay, so the next is, I think you have to get Northeast Revaluation back in town. They came during COVID 2020, and they didn't go into the houses. A lot of houses, they've added bedrooms illegally, added bathrooms, and they're not getting assessed. And we find this out when they come before the town council, and they want to legalize, you know, they're illegally added bedrooms or bathrooms. So houses aren't getting assessed for their true value. We also, they also need to redo all the commercial assessments. Mr. Durkin's Break Hotel, his 2024 tax bill is $8,000 less than his 2023 tax bill. Dunes Club, their 2024 tax bill is $12,000 less than their 2023 tax bill. My tax bill is $850 more. You know, something's wrong with these numbers and with these pictures. We're not generating the income the way that we should. The rest, I'll leave that to the finance department, but there's a lot of ways we can generate income so that we don't have to take from our cash reserves. We can't take from our cash reserves. Oh, I'm done, okay.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for public forum? Yes, gentleman right here. And I'll go to the back.
Carl Allenstein, Isle Point Road, Narragansett. I want to speak, since we are not allowed to speak later, on the, the proposed vote on the ADU amendments. I think it's both procedurally and substantively flawed. Procedurally, you've included an amendment to include or exclude sellers from, sellers from FAR, which really needs to go back procedurally to the, the planning board for a meeting, because that's a material change, I think, as advised by your solicitor. The other problem is, as I pointed out in, in prior meetings, Councilman Durkin has a conflict of interest. He's obviously participating in this and planning to vote. He should recuse himself. That's flawed. Substantively, the problem with this, and also the 13 amendments, is it doesn't achieve its purpose. The, the stated goal of this, and I've, I've read editorials on this, is that it's going to promote affordable housing. There's this fallacy out there, which is debunked by the Crane Report, that if you build more units and increase density, you're going to promote affordable housing. That is not the rule, and not what is the market experience is in Narragansett. What's going to happen is you're going to increase, and this is said in the Crane Report, it's said in the planning port, report, you're going to increase the cost of housing, and since you're not enforcing the three-student ordinance, which is on the books and has been upheld, and problems, there's no limits on this. You're basically having open season for developers here with this build, maybe build agenda, and we're not opposed to change, those of us who are speaking against this. We want some balance so that the entire town doesn't become like Eastward Look, and, and essentially a bunch of dormitories that are rented to students for nine months a year and three months of the year for, for short-term rentals. So what you're doing is actually undermining affordable housing. What I'd love to see this council do is actually take up the cause of affordable housing, find some properties that the town owns and controls that can be converted to affordable housing, as there was in Clark Road, and develop those. But the way you're going with the market, which is just going to increase the prices, the town is going to be priced out of buying property to, to have affordable housing. So you're putting in motion something that is very pro-developer, is very pro-landlord, and it's not pro-residents of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, gentleman in the back.
Hey, everybody. Steve D. Simone, 86 Sunset Boulevard. Obviously, I'm here as a resident. I also wanted to speak on the ADUs, because I watched the meeting last, two weeks ago, and a couple of you were having problems with taking sellers out of the FAR, and I just wanted to tell you why I think it's a good idea, all right? If you're going to encourage ADUs, which I think is a great idea, it does help our residents, it helps people age in place, it helps families move here, obviously, the demand for a one-bedroom shed is not the same as for a house, so I think we're okay with that. But the reason to take out seller is because you shouldn't have more rights than your neighbor on your property, because your property's larger. The smaller the lot, the more FAR affects it. And if they're already up against that FAR and they want to build an ADU, they're still going to need a variance. So by getting it out of the FAR and approving the ADUs, you'll make them easier to build, which will encourage more people to build them, and maybe they can stay here and their families can stay here with them. And that's all I got to say, and I'll see you guys later.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak during open forum?
Hi, Roger Jaddus, One Blind Brook Drive. I had no intentions of speaking tonight, but after hearing that last testimony, I felt Wants to build more ADUs? What's the control? Who are you going to rent them to? What about the parking? What about the utilities? None of this has been researched except through the planning board. I can't, the previous speaker just blew my mind. He's on this side, and I'm on this side. Yeah, I'd like to come together and do some compromising, but the proposed, I know we can't get into the ADU, correct, President? Okay, because that's, that's what he had mentioned, so I'm just following.
Yeah, I'll just, hold on, I'll just pause, just for clarity. That's what, we had a very lengthy number of public hearings on it, that's just why we can't go into it anymore.
No, I understand.
And because we closed it, so I'm going to give you your time back, so I just want to make sure that, uh...
No, I just had to rebut what that previous speaker said.
Yep, that's fine.
And I'm sure the majority of people behind me agree with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Lawler.
Before I start, Alex, thank you so much, and Jim, thank you for the wonderful tribute you gave to my dad. You know, before I was fighting the town battles with the URI students, my dad was with other four neighborhoods, and he started what they call the five families to try to have more housing in town, so we continued the fight, and that was 20 years ago. So let's hope we can start getting something done. Just wanted to say a few things about, about the ADU. I agree with the previous speaker that this needs to be sent back to the planning board. Actually, let me comment on Roger's statement. I've never wished to see Joe Volpe in a room here to speak before, as I did tonight. Mr. Volpe, last, last meeting, commented on Rupert Friday, a planning board member coming up and speaking, and said how wrong that was. So ditto, Mr. D. Simone, how wrong that was just. As far as the ADUs, I've sent an email, I copied Alex and all of our town solicitors, and including Mr. Craven, over the weekend. Procedurally, you need to send this back to the planning board, you're making two major changes. I know that the council has come out many times. Donna, you're an advocate, you don't want to get sued. Well, the town's been sued twice before on the three-student alone on procedural issues, this exact same thing, not going back to the planning board. You remember, James, that happened under your watch. It happened under Matt Manix's watch as well. We need to send this back. There are two. The seller that, that Jim wants to take out, the year-round housing, that I think's a good thing, it needs to go back to the planning board so that we don't get sued again, because it isn't only 2100 that will sue the town. There are town residents that are ready to sue the town if law is not being followed and if procedures aren't being followed correctly. I can't help, I don't know if anybody saw today, the Providence Journal, obviously the Providence Journal doesn't have a fact checker employed any longer, because a lot of the facts they have here really aren't facts, but it ended with a, a comment by a Narragansett resident, his name was Jeff Hamel, I've never met him, but what a telling statement he had at the end of the discussion about, about housing and about zoning things that you're trying to do. His last, his last sentence of the article was, "The community without families won't be a community for long." And I think that's where we're at right now. The zoning changes that you're making, the zoning change that the speaker made, allowing lots that were merged to unmerge to be able to develop affordable housing, well, in my neighborhood, Briggs Farms, there was a lot that was unmerged, and it was just recently, it was, I'm sorry, it was merged together, recently unmerged. Jim, your son sold the lot, your friend had, had a buyer that bought the lot, and they unmerged those lots. Guess what the lots are on the market for? $800,000. How can that be affordable housing? So what you guys are trying to do with doing what the speaker wants you to do isn't creating affordable housing. There are many ways, we just had a speaker before that had many great ways to do affordable housing. This isn't it, guys. You're killing our community. You're getting rid of our families. Please stop. Send it back to the planning board, have the planning look at the seller, at the, at the year-round, and most of all, the parking. I spoke about it last time I was here. The state law says there needs to be one parking place per bedroom. You didn't even look at it. Do better.
Thank you.
Hi, council. Thomas Williams on South Pier Road, 27 years. Just want to like, bring to attention the condition of the sidewalks on South Pier Road. This is our children going to school, and it's very dangerous. Every day I see the track teams or any sports players that are coming from high school, they don't run on the sidewalk, they run on the street. Anybody rides a bike to school on the street, not on the sidewalk. Like I said, I've been there for 27 years, nothing's had been done with the condition. The curb, it's in shambles, it's just, it doesn't even look like a curb, into in a driveway. So I'd really like you to be attention that we definitely need that in repair, and at any time, if you want, take a walk or a bicycle ride on that sidewalk, and let me know how your trip was. It's very dangerous. What can we do about that? Would we, someone told me that that was a state road, it has to be approved by the state. I don't know, is I told the truth? And if you're a council, you should work with the state and have that worked out to have that. We've seen that the road was paved, so let's bring the sidewalks, let it look better for the community, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Just as an observation and a comment on that, I, I agree, especially when we have the blessing of the fleet, that's so heavily used every year on South Pier Road. If there's any opportunity that we can look into building up that infrastructure, we certainly will. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Anyone else for, from the public wish to speak during open forum? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to our public hearing this evening. Is there a motion to open and hold a public hearing on the application of GBC LLC DBA, the dock side, for a new Class B victualling alcohol beverage license at Assessor's Platt? Is that a one or an I?
I.
I, thank you.
I-G.
I-G Lot 214-S, 290-294 Great Island Road, Narragansett, Rhode Island.
Motion to hold. Open and hold?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. All right, so we're in a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak on this matter? Nope, unless my eyes are deceiving. So Sarah did send as a public record over to the members of the town council this evening. Sarah, I don't know if you want to just provide just the commentary and the confirmation of what was sent over to the town council for public record.
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Samikas, the applicant for the dock side, did forward over an email today. The building itself is on leased land. Rhode Island DEM did have, want to make sure that the restrictions of the previous business were going to be kept in place, which was, you know, food to be served with alcohol at all times, no liquor served after 12:30. Mr. Samikas is looking to comply with all of those restrictions. He's not asking for anything different, which is what the email he forwarded to us stated. The motion that is on here to approve that liquor license does state with existing restrictions, so we are looking to keep those restrictions in place for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I just ask a clarifying question? If this was already in existence, why is it coming up now and not during the annual renewal period?
The previous business that was at this location did go out of business, and so it's not a transfer of a license.
Right.
That business closed in 2023.
Okay.
So that's why it's a new application.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else from the council have any questions or comments to Sarah before we open it up to the public? Yes, Dr. Alba, one moment. We're in the middle of a public hearing, so I'm going to ask that the council, just if they have any questions or comments first. Nope.
I'm good.
Okay, so, Dr. Alba, we're in the middle of the public hearing on the liquor license renewal for the dockside. Do you wish to comment at this time? Okay, thank you.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony given the matter now and hearing will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so hope God...
I do.
Please state and spell your full name for the record.
Dr. Albert Alba, 24 Eagles Nest Terrace, Narragansett, Rhode Island. Okay, great. So I'm in full support of this liquor license. In the past, it was Captain Foggy's, I believe, that was located in that location. Am I correct? And the venue, I read through the venue, no nights for under 21. I know the gentleman, he's very down-to-earth, he's very family-oriented, beautiful family man, and I would strongly support this. He takes great care in preservation of his properties, and also for the welfare of adolescents and those younger age. So he's a very responsible gentleman, and I would strongly support the approval of this, like I've approved in support, in spoken support, of many other liquor licenses. In fact, when the Boone Street Market was put in place, I supported their liquor license because I believe that small businesses are a benefit for our town. But we also, you know, and I did look at the restrictions that he's putting in place too. That's also important too, because obviously, even though I support small businesses, we obviously want to have some control to make sure that our neighbors, the neighbors in Galilee, in that area, that there is... There are rules, so they have the peace and tranquility of the neighborhood, so that doesn't get disturbed. So I would be in support of this particular license. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to confirm for the record, did we swear, Dr. Alba? Okay, thank you. It goes so fast up here. But it seems slower out there a lot of the times. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during this public hearing? Seeing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing at 7:53?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second. Any final discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Next, is there a motion to approve a Class B... This is item C3. Is there a motion to approve a Class B victualling alcohol beverage license for GBC LLC DBA, the dockside, Assessor's Platt, I-G lot 214-S, 290-294 Great Island Road, Narragansett, Rhode Island, with existing restrictions subject to state and local regulations?
Motion to approve with the previous restrictions. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Next, on to item C4. Is there a motion to schedule a public hearing on the town's draft wastewater facilities plan?
So moved. I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
Yep, second.
Seconded by Mr. Durkin. Discussion. Oh, do we have to vote to schedule first? I just want to make sure I'm doing this right.
You have a first and second, so your motion's open now. You can discuss dates, and then we'll vote on it.
Thank you.
Did you see the email that I forwarded from the town engineer?
Nope.
Mr. Gerhardt?
Not on this one.
The suggested date listed on the staff report was originally July 29th.
Oh, that's right.
He's going to push that to the following week, either August 4th, which is the regular town council meeting, or Wednesday, August 6th. Just not sure if it's going to be a longer public hearing, if it will generate a lot of commentary. If you wanted to do it on an off night versus a regular night, it's up to you.
All right, thank you very much. Any comments from the council on preferences? We'll start with you, Mr. Durkin.
I prefer the night of the council meeting.
Which would be August 4th, okay. Counselor Vignali, any preference?
No, August 4th works for me also.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Colonies?
August 4th works for me.
And Torielle, Counselor Torielle?
Both dates work for me.
Okay. So we will make... I will agree with August 4th to schedule that public hearing that evening. Just for clarification, Sarah, do we have any other public hearings currently scheduled for August 4th?
Nope.
All right, so we will schedule that for August 4th, so is... We will schedule the public hearing on the town's draft wastewater facilities for August 4th. We have a first and second. Any final discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Next, on to consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items D1, D2, and D3?
Motion to approve D1 through D3.
Second.
Discussion. Any questions or comments from the council? Any questions or comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. On to new business. Is item E1 from Community Development Department, is there a motion to introduce, read, pass, and adopt as a second reading an ordinance and amendment of Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Narragansett, Rhode Island, entitled Zoning, to amend text in compliance with the state statute changes from 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. So this is just the continuation from the vote from last meeting. This is the second reading, as communicated before open forum. We do not take comment, as the comments collected for this motion are attained during the public hearing process, and as procedure, we don't take public comment on a second reading. But just as a question, clarification to our counselor, just, would you mind just sharing your professional opinion on the procedure that was followed, just for the general public and the council?
Right, so the process took place over a course of a series of nights. Suggestions were made by the council and the public. We took those suggestions, drafted language to amend or add to the ordinances, and that is allowed under our ordinance and the state statute, state zoning enabling statute, and we followed all appropriate procedures. One thing to note is that these ordinances aren't written in stone. If the planning board has further comments, and notably, the planning board did approve and send this to you directly, the changes you made were not so substantive that you have to send it back. And even if they were substantive of a tremendous nature, theoretically, you wouldn't have to send it back. You're the deciding body, you're the legislative body who makes these decisions. So, like I said, the ordinance is not written in stone. If the planning board or the members of the public have any potential amendments or additions, anyone can propose a amendment to a zoning ordinance, whether it's the town council, the town staff, a member of the public, or the planning board. And that's still available. If their improvements is still made, they can be made. This is not a completely finished product. No ordinance ever is. So I think that's something to note as you go forward in all votes and changes.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the council have any questions or comments for James? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will abstain. Motion passes 4-0 with one abstention. On to engineering. Is there a motion to approve the recommendations of the sewer policy committee and approve a waiver relative to sewer policy sections 2.0D and 7.0A to Platt D., Lot 163, 141, Boone Street, proposed mixed-use development with four residential and four commercial units?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. So this comes directly from the sewer policy committee. Counselor Colonies and I were on this committee, are on this committee, not were. And I believe Counselor Colonies, correct me if I'm wrong, this was a unanimous recommendation and even came approved by our town engineer.
Yes.
Awesome. So that being said, are there any comments or questions from the public? Yes, Ms. Salaberto.
Catherine Salaberto, 48-year-old, is caught. And I've spoken to Mr. Vickers about this, but I'd like to say this town's been very good to Mr. Vickers. He's developed three properties on Boone Street. The first one, there was an old duplex and a single-family house on the property, so we had three sewer permits. He demolished all of that and put up, I think it's six residential and three commercial. So he was given another six sewer permits, sewer connections, whatever you want to call them. And then the place next door, he's got four units, and he added a store in the front, smoothie booty, so he received another sewer connection. Now he wants to build eight units. He has two sewer connections for that lot. These are all lots that aren't that big, believe me. And so now he wants another six sewer connections. And because he's done these things in piecemeal, he's not subject to the affordable housing mandate. But I've spoken to Mr. Vickers, and he says he's going to cross his heart and hope to die, and he's going to make two affordable units in the property that he owns on the corner of Continental and Boone Street. Now, I guess he submitted plans, I guess I'll have to speak at that hearing, because affordable in this town is... The rate is so high. The median income for a household in this town is $138,000. This is what I've last seen online. And for a single person, it's $96,000. So, you know, I don't want him renting to people making, you know, $96,000 or $136,000, $138,000. If he's going to put two affordable units, there has to be some restriction, so that it would be, you know, people make $50,000, $60,000 a year that can afford to rent there. So I guess we'll have to take him at his word, but bottom line is, as I said, we've been very good to him, and all of this is going into a system that's maxed out. We're buying capacity from URI, and it seems it's .2, which I did a little math, and it seems that we're putting 280,000 gallons of water or whatever into the West Marlin system every day. And I'm not quite sure who we're paying to buy that extra capacity. Maybe Mr. Gebhardt could tell you. But bottom line is, we're all paying this for, you know, people to put eight units. And that's why I think the lot development fee has to be raised, really. Plus, the sewer fund really needs the money. But, you know, we'll see what happens. I'm not opposed, but, you know, my sewage goes into that plant, so I want to make sure it, you know, works. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just start with this gentleman, then I'll go to you, Dr. Alba, is that all right with you? Thank you. Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Council President, members of the council, Attorney Matthew Landry, on behalf of the petitioner, Boone Street Capital, and Mr. Vickers. I'll try to be brief. This went in front of the sewer subcommittee, and two of the members here on the council were present.
Sorry, would you just mind, if I just asked for a clarification? Since this is a attorney on behalf of who's filed, do we take name and residence, are they restricted to the three minutes, or do we usually allow them to speak?
He represents the petitioner. I'm sure Mr. Landry, be brief, he's very succinct, so I'm sure it's fine either way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only danger with a lawyer saying they'll be brief is usually they go much longer, but I will try to be brief.
I know.
And for the members of the public. So we did go in front of the sewer subcommittee a few weeks ago regarding 141 Boone Street. As you all know, the sewer policy restricts each unit to a specific number of unit allocations based on when the sewer policy was passed. For this property, it was two units. Mr. Vickers had previously received approval for a 20-room hotel, restaurant, pool for that property. Switched gears a little bit here, something much less intense than what was originally proposed. As you all know, Boone Street has been the topic of conversation between this council, the planning staff, and prior councils for Boone Street Planning District and, you know, Mixed Use District. There's a number of goals and aspirations set forth in the comprehensive plan for top-of-shop style housing, which is what is being proposed for this property. It's going to be four commercial units on the ground floor, four residential units on the second floor. And respectfully, the sewer policy is a little bit antiquated when it comes to the goals and policies set forth, particularly for Boone Street. The type of housing and commercial development that it contemplates is really restricted by the unit allocations under that waiver policy. And the policy specifically allows the committee, the sewer subcommittee and the council, to consider conformance with the comprehensive plan as grounds for a waiver, as well as environmental concerns and undue hardship. So respectfully, based on the correspondence that we submitted to the committee and the committee's recommendation, we're asking that the council approve the waiver request. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Alba?
Dr. Al Alba, 24 Eagles Nest Terrace. So I guess my concern is, you know, I support small businesses, and I support people who are, you know, building residential properties. But what we have to be careful with is in regards to our sewer capacity. It's well documented, well-known, Mr. Brady brought this out many a times, that we have an antiquated sewer system. That being known, I know we have a sewer commission, but then again, I have seen dorm-style houses built in neighborhoods. I have seen two residential properties that have two and three bedrooms knocked down, and they're morphed into a 10-15 bedroom. And then we only have to look at any Airbnb or any rental site and see that, I don't know how many bedrooms these houses that are going to be upstairs, but if we do not have our system of checks and balances, if we do not have a watchdog agency to make sure that our maximum limit of individuals can reside in these properties, both during the school year and the summertime, then I fear that we are going to end up having a sewer system which is going to fail. We're also going to have fewer and fewer families moving into our neighborhood. The bulk zoning, I feel, should be put back in place. It was put there for a reason, and we need to do these things as soon as possible. If we do not have a system of checks and balances, the money grab of the power grab of the money, and people feel, you know, there's no watchdog agency, then people are just going to flood their rentals with people like sardines. We have a three-bedroom, and each bedroom has two to three people inside the bedrooms. It's a safety concern too. God forbid if there's a fire, you know? These houses were engineered for maximum capacity. We had a beach carrying capacity study, which to me was needless, but we should have, we should comply with our capacity study for our sewer system. We should have our research engineers, look at that. And we need to do this now. It's well worth the money, because we can't just keep allowing these individuals... And don't get me wrong, if the gentleman's going to be building, he's going to be complying with the town laws, that's a wonderful thing. But we have to make sure, because even though the sewer committee approved it, did they approve it so that twice as many people that should be allowed are going to be allowed to be in that unit? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, anyone from the council have any final questions, comments?
I'd just like to say that, you know, the record shows that the property was already a... approved for 20 units. Now, with the proposal in front of us is for eight. Four of them are businesses and they're not open at night, so the sewer use capacity, unless it's a laundromat, which I don't think he's planning on doing, would be much less use on the sewer system. And, I mean, personally, I think what he did over there on Boone Street previously, which is similar to the project he's doing on Continental, is going to be an enhancement for the town.
Excellent. Anyone else? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next, on to item F2. Is there a motion to approve the recommendations of the sewer policy committee and approve a waiver relative to sewer policy sections two point D, seven point A, and seven point F to plat Q lot 1384 South Pier Road, proposed subdivision?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone from the council have any questions or comments? Anyone from the public? Ms. Celebrato.
Catherine Celebrato, 48-year-old's court. I really didn't have a chance to read through this one. It seemed like you approved it, then you, first you said no, then you said yes. It seems to me that, I'm not quite sure why you approved this, to tell you the truth. I don't know if, is there going to be a condition that these lots have to be occupied by family members? I think that was one of the things he threw out, that he was going to divide the property that he has and add two extra lots, and they were going to be for family members. I'm just wondering, is that going to be a condition or not? I think it would be good if it could be a condition, rather than build two more, you know, dorms. So I'm, like I said, I'm unclear what he intends to do there. So if you could explain it, it would be good. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll clarify in, once public comments done on this item. Does anyone else from the public have any questions or comments? Dr. Alba?
Yes, Dr. Al Alba, 24 Eagles Nest Terrace. So I agree with Mrs. Celebrato in regards to, we really, you know, got to keep a watch, you know, and I'm not signaling out this individual, I'm not signaling out the last individual who has had his lawyer represented. I'm talking about generally all over Narragansett. My concern is, I don't point the fingers at any one individual, because that would be false, it would be wrong to do. I don't, I didn't know the last individual, I never met him before, so it'd be foolhardy of me, it'd be ignorant of me to point the finger saying he's not going to comply. But on that note, I hope and pray that we spend the monies, I think it'd be monies well spent, to have a watchdog agency set up who are going to overlook and watch over and go onto the internet and check the Airbnb. I think Mrs. Jill Lawler brought out the fact that they actually have some kind of a program where they can actually tag different houses in different subdivisions. Because we do want affordable housing in Narragansett. We do have to make it so people have, we have some control on the number of people who are renting out these properties. Otherwise, people are going to be not able to compete. You're going to have that young family who's going to want to move in here. And if they have, even if they have $100,000, $150,000 a year, if you have a developer who's going to take that property and turn it into a rental, and where you see it go online, the summer rentals are making, you know, $6,000, $7,000, $8,000, $9,000 a week, they cannot compete. So, and like I said, we all want affordable housing. We need this. So, you know, and we also, like I said, our sewer systems also has to be examined. I don't know if a sewer fee, we could have a sewer fee attached to each seasonal rental. If they're year-round rental, no. But if they're seasonal rentals, have a sewer surcharge fee. That would be a consideration. Also, I don't know if this might be allowable, but maybe you can speak to the president of the University of Rhode Island and say, if a student is not living on campus and they're registered at URI, could we somehow, could the university work with the town in Narragansett and somehow charge a, some kind of a fee for living down the line, using our services? Because let's face it, they are taxing our services. And that's, you know, if they don't want to spend the monies on these dorms, well, then if these people, if the students want to live down the line, then maybe we can see, you know, there could be a fee for sewer fees, you know? And also the Ulton Jones campus, that might be another consideration, could they build dorms over there? I don't know if that's a possibility or not. But these are just some ideas to share with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public have any comments on this? Seeing none. Dr. Alba and Ms. Celebrato, would you mind sending the town council an email on some of those thoughts and considerations, just for our record? Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone from the council have any final thoughts or comments?
I think the sewer lot development fee should probably get looked at, but that's a different, maybe Jim is writing that down, that we can take a look at that. That's a good point.
Yeah, I agree. I think there were a lot, some really great points brought up this evening. And the issue of sewer and water capacity is definitely something that we recognize and we, I agree that we need to address. And I'm definitely open to the recommendations that have been presented here for us to consider at a later time.
I'd just chime in real quick on that.
Yeah.
Same thing. I mean, it probably doesn't belong here, but capacity, I think, certainly should be looked at. And I think that we have a year-long agreement with one thing, and then we're going to revisit the capacity after that. Is that true, Jim? Yeah. So that was, I've been talking about it with people for a while now.
Excellent. Thank you for clarifying that. Anyone else from the council have any final thoughts or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next on to the finance department, item G1. Is there a motion to read, pass, and accept as a first reading an ordinance and amendment of chapter 58 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Narragansett entitled Retirement and Pensions, specifically section 21, definitions in section 32, creditable service?
Motion to read, pass, and accept.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone from the council have any comments?
I actually have a question.
Sure.
The addition of the definition of normal cost, is it a new process, or is it just being added to clarify how things are being done?
It's worded differently because of the way it's set up, but the actual description, the definition, is that normal cost means the cost of the benefit accruals less the expected employee contributions is the net normal cost as a percentage of payroll as found in the annual actuarial valuation. There will be no further costs for the town. It offers the opportunity for laterals, for any department, or maybe someone that works in planning, and they have, you know, three years maybe working somewhere else, and they wish to come over to here. Those three years are not eligible for a pension benefit in the other community. So the finance would, and the pension board would determine the contribution they'd have to make to purchase that creditable time. And it could be spread out over, up to a 10-year period. Right now, it's cost prohibitive for a lot of employees that come out, they come in with four years that can't be used in any pension. And if they want to purchase it back, it's cost prohibitive if they have a family or anything.
Okay, so basically, it's just if someone wants to buy back or buy into the pension system, if they have, say, worked here, left and wanted to come back and continue with their pension?
Correct. That's one of the categories.
Okay.
The ordinance itself is always allowed for the buyback. It's the bulk payment, the one-time payment is what was rather restrictive, because many people can't even afford it, you know, a few years later if they wait, because the interest accrues over the period of time that they're waiting. But it's still bulk, so it gets even more expensive to purchase it back.
Oh, okay. I mean, I think it's a good idea to allow people to do it over a time instead of having to come up with that large amount of money all at one time.
It's just like it is for the, you know, for the veterans when they go with the four years when they come in.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Anyone else on the council have any questions or comments? Anyone from the public? Ms. Celebrato?
Catherine Celebrato, 48-year-old's court. I think one of my questions was answered. Somebody comes over, say bids into the police department from Providence, he has five years in Providence, he wants to buy five years into our system. It would be at full actuarial value, correct?
He can't buy five years back.
He can't buy five, why not? You know, how much can you buy? Three?
Four.
Four. That's a weird place to start. Four? Okay. All right. But it's a full actuarial value. There's another part to this, that if you worked for the town before, and I guess you can take your money out of the pension system here with interest. And so people have done that, but if they want to come back in to be re-employed, they would only have to pay what they took out, correct? Jim? Correct? Like, you know?
That would be determined by the pension board and finance.
That's not, I mean, it says something in here, so. Okay. The other thing is, let's see here, what's the other one? So we're talking about full actuarial value, which is quite a bit of money, believe me. So I have a funny feeling that might kind of deter some people, but what can you do? That's the new system. I know that from the state. So it's people who were employed before, they buy, they put back in what they took out. That's what this says, which I agree with. The other thing is that I don't think people who served in the military should have to buy their time. I think they should get it for nothing. Credit. Now, my husband's home in Providence Fire Department and he received his service time. First he paid for it and then he got it back, because there was state law at the time that you couldn't charge people for their service time. They repealed that law. But that doesn't mean we have to do it, you know, have to follow it. We can, I think if somebody has served during a war period and they say they're a police officer, they want to come in and become a police officer or a town employee, whatever, I don't think they should have to pay for those two or whatever how many years into our pension system. I just don't think it's right. And you can change this ordinance to make sure that they don't have to pay. I think that's about it. Although, let me take this opportunity to say that I'm totally opposed to people bidding in from other departments at a level higher than an entry level. You know, right now, the way our ordinance is written, a captain from another department could bid into a captain position here. And that prevents the people who've been, you know, on our police force for a good number of years from moving up. And I don't think that's right. That's what the last town council did. They changed the ordinance in that way, which I thought was wrong then, and I said it then, but it's just not right. It's not good for morale, you know, if you allow somebody, you know, to bid in from a higher level in another department, and here you are, working here for 10 years, and you want to take the sergeant test or lieutenant test or whatever the heck it is. And, you know, the job is blocked. So I think you need to revisit that ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to address the council on a comment that was made.
Yes, thank you.
That ordinance that was changed was approved by the previous council with the full support of the union membership, because they want to recruit qualified individuals that they work side by side with 24 hours a day.
Thank you. Was, okay, is there anyone else from the public who hasn't spoken on this item wish to speak? Dr. Alba?
Yes, Dr. Al Alba, 24 Eagles Nest Terrace. First of all, I want to thank the men and women who serve on our police and fire department. We have the upper, they are literally lifesavers for all of us, and thank you for their service. And I don't, I just hope that whatever policies that are put in place, it's equitable and fair for everyone, including the teachers, including the administrative assistants who work at our schools. So, you know, sadly, the state of Rhode Island had a pension overhaul, and I understand the state wanted to save some monies, but on the other hand, it was not equitable. So whatever decision you all make, I hope and pray that it's equitable and everyone is treated fairly. Also, if any changes are made, I hope that those people who have already been vested, like for example, if they're going from a defined plan to a undefined plan, such as a 401K, a 403B, I hope that change will only affect the new hirees and not those people who are already vested and have already committed years and years of service to our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment or speak at this time? Seeing none. Any final thoughts from the council? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. On to building and zoning. Is there a motion to, item H1, is there a motion to approve the contractual agreement between the Town of Narragansett and Ernest Marinaro Jr. to perform electrical inspections for the building official's office from July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026?
Mr. President, there's six of these. Can we put them together? They're all for the same office and they're approvals of people that, do they have to be done individually?
I don't have a preference.
I think they're all separate motions. I'd prefer you could do them all together, but I think it's best to do them all separately.
Okay.
Okay. Motion to approve, Ernie Marinaro.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone have any questions or comments? Anyone from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. On to item H2. Is there a motion to approve the contractual agreement between the Town of Narragansett and James Harris to perform plumbing and mechanical inspections for the building official's office from July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone from the council have any questions, comments? And just as a reiteration, these are all just renewals. Correct? No new appointments?
The two full-timers are the two main contracts for Mr. Harris and Mr. Marinaro renewals and Wojcik, Wilks is too, right? Wilks. And Mello's the only new one.
Okay.
But all the ones, the 185 an hour, just for the record, so there's no confusion, that comes out of the main contract. They're just extras, because there's so much work. Sometimes the main contract, you can't fill it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public have any questions, comments on this? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. On to item H3. Is there a motion to approve the contractual agreement between the Town of Narragansett and Russell DeGrange to perform plumbing and mechanical inspections for the building official's office from July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Anyone from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We're getting a little feedback up here, just.
James, is your [inaudible]?
Thank you. Item H4. Is there a motion to approve the contractual agreement between the Town of Narragansett and James Mello to perform plumbing and mechanical inspections for the building official's office from July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone from the council have questions or comments? Anyone from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. On to item H5. Is there a motion to approve the contractual agreement between the Town of Narragansett and Anthony Wojcik to perform electrical inspections for the building official's office from July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone from the council have questions or comments? Anyone from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Finally, on to item H6. Is there a motion to approve the contractual agreement between the Town of Narragansett and David Wilks to perform electrical inspections for the building official's office from July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, questions, comments? Anyone from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. On to the town clerk. Is there Onto the town clerk, is there, uh, item J1, is there a motion to confirm the appointment?
What about I?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at an outdated version, excuse me. Is there, onto the town manager, is there item I1, is there a motion to approve the tentative agreement negotiated between the town and Narragansett Police Local 303, NAGE International Brotherhood of Police Officers for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I would just like to thank the police union, the town staff, and Ryan for a very successful, and the chief, very successful, um, negotiations. They were, um, efficient, quick, and, and I'm very happy at the outcome.
And I would just like to extend a thank you to the town staff, uh, police union reps, and, uh, Councilman Wignally, uh, for working collaboratively to produce a contract that is mutually beneficial for the town and for those who protect and serve our town. So, thank you.
Excellent. Council colonists, do you have any comments?
No, I guess I'd just like to thank the, uh, police officers of Narragansett for doing such a great job, and I'm glad this could be worked out very quickly.
Council dirken, any questions, comments?
Uh, thank you to the police officers that keep us safe.
Excellent. I too, uh, want to reiterate, you know, our sincerest gratitude to the Narragansett Police Department or Chief, uh, for these negotiations and the service that you provide our town. You know, I know that we've had inquiries come in recently. You're very quick to respond, uh, and always very impressed with your responses. So thank you for your service to our town. And, uh, heartfelt thank you to Councilors Wignally and Councilor Torialde for participating, and our town manager, of course, um, and our finance team for participating in these negotiations. Council Wignally, I believe this is two successful nego, contract negotiations that you've been a part of, uh, first with the firefighters and now with the, uh, Narragansett Police Department, and that's no small achievement. So just really heartfelt thank you to you for participating, uh, in those negotiations and providing, uh, your leadership, uh, to this town.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
So with that, any questions or comments, uh, from the, uh, public?
Hi, my name is David Cusajani. I live on 100 Secluded Drive. I want to thank those of you who helped in the negotiations of this contract and the firefighters' contract. I've participated in several contracts, and it's not always easy. Thank you for finding some middle ground because we lack that in today's society sometimes. Um, I want to point out, um, I want to thank the firefighters and the police officers of this town. And recently, I witnessed, um, the police officers at the beach de-escalate some very tense situations. As you know, they acted professionally, and, uh, it was incredible. Uh, they, they were very responsive, and it was impressive. And I want to thank them again for their actions and everything they do, especially the firefighters as well. When this town swells in the summer, they do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Dr. Alba?
Yes, I'd like to thank the police fire and rescue. Um, I guess there were two gentlemen who were in a kayak, and I guess, uh, somehow their boat went overboard, and it was just a matter of time that they would have died unless, uh, fire and rescue team, police fire and rescue, uh, they did not show up on time, but they did, thank God, and they saved those individuals' lives. So thank you very much, and I echo all of your statements about commending our police fire and rescue. They are truly lifesavers. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else from the public have any comments?
I would like to add just one comment, President Menzies. Uh, Narr, a lot of people don't know, Narragansett Police has been an accredited law enforcement agency for 10 years now, and that's quite an accomplishment. It sets down certain strict policies for training and for policies for the administration and, uh, general behavior of the officers and, and the level of training they have to receive. Not only has it improved the department to make it one of the premier municipal agencies that I've ever, ever had the, uh, the pleasure to work with, uh, it also reduces the town's liability in the case of any claims of, of poor training or, or poor, uh, selection through recruitment. They have an aggressive recruitment process. They're very careful who they refer to me for a final hire offer, and, uh, their training is, is vigorous, and the accreditation is something a lot of folks don't know about. And it, uh, it definitely improves the quality of the police department and gives them this a, a higher level of being proud of what they do. They already do a good job, but, uh, that helps them. And I'd like to thank them and all the public safety staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any final comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Onto item I2, is there a motion to adopt a resolution establishing the administrative compensation schedule for fiscal year 2025 to 2026?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone from the council have any questions or comments? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Onto the town clerk, is there a motion to confirm the appointment of item J, sorry, item J1, is there a motion to confirm the appointment of Brian Greve as the Conservation Commission Tree Board Representative to the Coastal Access Improvement Committee for a term set to expire on March 1st, 2028?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone from the council have any questions or comments on this item? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Uh, onto item J2, is there a motion to schedule a work session to conduct interviews for the zoning board on July 7th, 2025 at 5:30 PM?
Uh, motion to approve. That's a council meeting night.
Yes.
So it's prior to the council meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Just as a reminder, Sarah, the public hearing that we just scheduled, um, on Wastewater, that was August 4th. Okay, thank you. Never mind, I confirm myself. Um, any discussion, questions, comments on this item?
Um, the, we can, the, people can be added to the interview list, right? This doesn't tie it tight, because, right?
They just have to, they have to apply before the agenda gets posted because their names have to appear on the staff report.
And then, uh, is there any reason we can't interview the alternates?
No.
Okay.
That's fine.
And just procedurally, if we interview an alternate, we still have to fill that alternate position with another candidate, correct?
If one of the alternates moved to the full member seat, yes.
Yep.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
It's actually not, almost pertaining to this, but it's workshop schedules. Sarah, is there any way that we could put on a calendar, like all these dates, so that, you know, when the workshops are? Is, is, is there any way that that can get put into a calendar that we can have?
A user-friendly one?
Like a user-friendly one that I could just go on and see?
I can figure something out.
Perfect. That, that would be great.
Sure.
In committee meetings?
That's already.
I think they're already on there.
Oh, I know.
But it, it, I agree that, you know, it's not always the easiest to navigate, um, so just as a general request.
All the committee meetings are on I legislate, just so you know. Yeah, but they change sometimes. It's like, oh, God. We were just in the, we were in the small boardroom, and nobody showed up. They were all in the lodge boardroom.
Oh.
Do you believe that? We didn't hear.
I do. Um, and just as a general request for, um, in context, the zoning board position that we're interviewing for is for a position that has termed out, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. And, uh, for the general public, if anyone would like to apply to be on the zoning board, you have in, between now and, and what would be a good date to establish, Sarah? For you?
The, mm, let me look at my calendar.
Thursday before the 7th, right?
Right. So the Thursday prior to the 7th, whichever day.
Was that July 3rd?
Yeah, that's the 3rd.
Thank you. So between now and July 3rd to apply for the zoning board, if you would like, uh, to be considered? Okay. Thank you. Any final thoughts or comments?
Just seconding what President Menzies said. If you are interested in zoning, please apply.
Excellent.
Or any board?
Be careful what you wish for.
We got a lot of them.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Finally, onto the town council. Item K1, is there a motion to introduce, read, pass, and accept as a first reading a resolution amending the official list of parking restrictions and regulations in the town of Narragansett in accordance with the Narragansett Code of Ordinances to restrict parking at Leroy Thompson Memorial Park, AKA Boone Street Playground, to playground parking only from dawn until 9:00 PM with a three-hour limit?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Uh, yep. Council Wignally, I was about to pass it off to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, so the, the spots that are, are designated for parking only, presently just say park only, um, dawn to dusk or dawn to 9:00 PM, and people seem to be parking in those spots, and there's not a soul in the park. You could look over and there's no one there. So they're being used for other purposes other than the park. And I just, going by and seeing that and realize that there's families who really want to use the park. And there's moms who have children, you know, who, um, maybe have two or three children, need to get the kids out of the car in a safe manner, put them into the stroller. If you're parking on a side road or you're parking on Boone Street, the kids, you know, the possibility of something happening. So I think if we limit the parking to three hours, it, it is a deterrent, um, that will prevent people from using the spots to just go into a, um, a, a, a establishment around the area and just decide to spend, you know, the afternoon there, or people who have been known to park there for beach parking. So it's just going to serve as a deterrent for those types of situations. And, and, you know, people who decide to want to use the, uh, facility to park overnight, um, although it's not going to make, really affect that. But, um, I just really think that we need to do something to reserve spots for the park, and I think that this is a beginning as to a way to, um, to do that.
Thank you.
Since, um, since this was talked about, I kind of went by there, I, I think three times during the day, and, um, there was nobody in the, nobody in the park, nobody playing basketball, nobody in the park, and I, I, I was amazed at how many parking spots there are there. I, I only thought there was like six or seven, but I think I counted like 18 cars, and there was nobody around, so.
Were, was, were those parking spaces occupied?
With cars.
And then nobody, and nobody was play, in the playground or anything?
Right. Yeah, nobody playing ball, nobody walking their dog, you know? So I, I guess they're not being used for what they're supposed to be used for now.
Right.
I think this is a start, see what happens, you know? And it can get enforced because you have the, the kids roaming around, right, to enforce it, um, so I guess they're gonna.
CSOs.
CSOs, yeah. So they're gonna have to, um, sit there. Uh, uh, how are they gonna figure out people park more than three hours?
That would be a good question.
If it, if it, the parking ordinances are always difficult to pass. The more restrictions you put in them, the more difficult to enforce.
Right.
However, when it, if it passes, the next step would be to post appropriate signage, because right now there is no ordinance, so the signs mean nothing, and everyone knows that. So if the ordinance were to pass, we would produce the signage, post it, and then, uh, do like a, like a media blast and pay attention to it strictly at the beginning during the summer months with the CSOs. Kind of get the word out, "Sorry, sir, you, you have to move," you know, that, that type of thing.
So does it pass tonight, Jim, or does it pass on another reading?
Second reading would pass.
Second reading, yeah.
Two, two more weeks.
Um, so the reason why I, I, I don't support this, I've thought, thought about it for a long time. I've talked to a lot of families who don't, don't want this to happen. Every Saturday during the summer, we have Hoops by the Sea. Parents go there, um, some of them stay there for hours at a time watching other people's games, and having to move their parking space because there's a three-hour parking limit is, uh, is frustrating for them, and I would think it would be frustrating for me, too. Also, I would never put a three-hour parking limit at, at George C. or at Sprague or at Christopherrow, which is a public park. I have a hard time putting a, a three-hour parking limit at a public park. There's also the fact that they can go in a park and they do play in there, and they'll win, in the summer, you see there are people in there. And yeah, they might actually play for a couple of hours and then go grab some food at a local establishment, and that's good for our economy, frankly. So those are my thoughts on it. I, I just can't, I can't support putting a three-hour parking ban, a three-hour parking limit at a park.
Is it the amount of hours, Jason, or is it?
I just don't think we should be putting up any amount of hours at a park. It's a public park, you know? Um, there is not one family I've talked to that supports this.
When, when they go there and it's full of cars, so they don't complain? Like, somebody's complaining.
Nobody's complaining to me about it.
Right.
I'm talking to them. I mean, I'm, I'm there at Hoops by the Sea every Saturday. It's slamming in there, and you meet people that are watching games previously, and then they're staying and watching more games.
Well, I mean, I think that's, that's not what we want to do, so we have to do something to correct that in this ordinance.
I, I do think that, um, limiting parking in other parks is probably not something I would support also, but parking down in the Boone Street area is a, a problem, and we all know that. And I know that, um, it ha, it has been a problem. I know that there's been complaints brought forward to me about it, and parents who do, um, who are there to have their child play softball or Little League, can't find anywhere to park, um, and, you know, are late for the games. So I, I know that there is a problem because of the parking situation down there. And I just feel like that this is a beginning way, um, to try to help those individuals and help those families who want to go and use the playground, have their child go to softball or, or Little League. I don't know, I, I, it's a problem, and I, I think it, like, I believe that this is a start. It's probably maybe not be the best decision ever, and we could re-look at this again, but I think we do have to do something to start, um, and help these people who, we have the brand-new basketball courts, they look so nice down there.
And I get that, and I get your side of it, and I'm not like, you, you do, I mean, everybody does what they want to do, right? But like, I haven't talked to one family that has even remotely.
Fair enough.
Thought it was a good idea. And I haven't talked, and I know Hoops by the Sea. I know how busy it is down there, and I know that families stay there for multiple games as they get played out. So I, that's where I stand.
So that only happens on Saturdays? Is that Hoops by the Sea?
It's on Saturdays, but then you have summer, you have baseball leagues that go down there.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I mean, like, there's a lot of stuff happening down there, and, and limiting the parking for them is just not so, "Ooh, parking, I can't believe it." I think, "Oh, no, that's great."
Jim and, Jim and Jason, don't you both sit on the Parking Commission, I believe?
Yeah. I, I want free parking for all residents, and that would probably solve the whole problem, and then we wouldn't have to, we'd have a sticker on the resident car, like, like a beach pass.
When's, when's the next meeting of the Parking Commission? Sarah, if you know.
There is no meeting scheduled right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Everything...
But I would think that that would be something I would rather pass before putting a parking, three-hour parking limit down there.
I think it'd be advantageous to take this as written, go before the Parking Commission, get thoughts, feelings, workshop it there a little bit before passing this, I think. Agreed that it was, that this is a step in the right direction. And we do need some sort of enforcement slash deterrent there. But we have a commission specifically for this. This is a fairly hot-button issue, I'd say, there just regards to the area. Let's put this before them, put some heads together, and see what comes back. Just my thinking there.
I'm okay with that.
I like that idea. We could table it and then come back to it after.
I mean, I would just ask that Parking Commission meet soon-ish, within the next like two, three weeks?
You know, we're waiting for the budget to be done. If the budget's done, we can do that. Is that something we can talk about right now, Jim? Tierney?
If the goal is to refer this, I believe they can amend it, can't they? Instead to pass, to refer? You could amend, you could amend the item to refer it. And then we don't have to set the date right now on that. We just say to refer it, and then we can set a date between us.
Okay.
Okay.
And the police, whoever's in charge of parking from the police department can be there and...
Sure, all of our parties, we'll pick a date that works, but we don't have to pick a date tonight.
I'm busy, but I have time to do it now. I mean, it's, you know, it's definitely time to do it.
It's time to get there.
What, sorry, what does that mean? Like, you're busy, but you have time to do it?
Well, no, no, it's a busy time, you know?
Of the year?
For everybody.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
But I, you know, I want, this was something I wanted to do earlier on.
Yeah.
And my, you know, my thoughts are that residents should be able to park at Narragansett facilities on Narragansett roads.
Right.
Throughout town.
Right, and then, of course, but being able to find the right balance with, when there is such a limited number of, amount of parking spaces in town, as we know. How do we go about, like, regulating that, ensuring that, you know, there's preferential treatment to Narragansett residents to be able to park, but also be able to allow visitors to come into our town to have the similar equitable access to our small businesses as well? Because we know it's more than just our year-round residents that live here that contribute to our local businesses. So I am very intrigued by this conversation. I, too, also, just to comment on this, share the same sentiments as Councilor Colonies as well, a similar concern. And I do also understand the concerns, you know, bike, the bike stop is right there. And it's a perfect example of the overflow of when parking is not available, that people are taking advantage of any parking spaces that they find readily available. So where I'm coming from, I think it comes down to the enforcement, which, you know, our chief has already spoken on that, at least with the council, that there are an increased number of community service officers who will be patrolling, particularly in the Boone Street area during the summer. You know, our current signs that are there on Boone Street asking people to park and only park if they are planning on using the playground and recreational facilities. But as you've indicated, there are times in which you'll go down there, you'll see an enormous number of parking, people, you know, parking there and going around to local businesses, going to the beach, you know. I'm guilty of doing it in my youth, parking once there and then walking all the way to the beach. So I understand that it is a very real problem. And at the end of the day, you know, how do we go about enforcing and ensuring that those who are parking at the, at that parking, sorry, at that playground are in fact using the playground? So I think, I agree, you know, that I think we can look at this more. I do also have similar concerns about restricting access to a public park or playground, especially when we can't guarantee what it is that they're gonna be there for. Say, if I'm a parent and I'm coming to this league, I assume there's like youths in that league, yeah? So if I have two children that are competing on Saturday, that's, you know, likely to go more than the three hours, you know, how do we make it equitable across the board? So I do agree that something needs to be done. But I think that we need to really iron out the pros and cons. And, you know, I think, I appreciate the recommendation that's been made to refer this to the, you said Parking Commission?
It's a parking subcommittee.
Parking subcommittee, thank you. And look at this in more detail. So, any additional thoughts?
Although I believe that we should support it now, I have no objection to referring this for further study by the parking.
The, so, what if we just restricted it to Narragansett residents? Or is that not, is that not enforceable?
I don't know how we would be able to enforce that. Again, I think enforcement is the biggest issue, especially when considering not only our town residents, but our local businesses in the area, that, you know, we've heard and recognized that people are parking and are using these parking spaces to do other things than what they were allotted to do. So again, I think it comes down to a more in-depth conversation with maybe, you know, our Parking Subcommittee, with the Narragansett Police Department, Town Manager, to come up with a reasonable plan that we can communicate to the residents in town. Maybe, you know, it's between now and the next town council meeting.
Yeah.
I think that can certainly happen. And, you know, then we can go on from there. Because I agree, we're in the summer, and this is a very relevant issue now.
Correct.
So...
So...
So we have a motion in a second, I think.
So could, would we make a motion to amend?
Yes.
The motion to recommend this to the Parking Subcommittee for further study and to come back with us with their recommendation?
Does that work?
Right, to vote on the amendment and then vote on the amended motion if it passes.
Vote on the amendment first?
Yep.
Okay, so can we vote on the amendment first and then take public comment? I just want to make sure that if anyone here wants to speak on this item, they can...
We have a motion on the table now. You might want to ask for public comment now and then, based on that.
Okay, does anyone want to speak on this before we move forward? Dr. Alba?
Dr. Al Alba, 24 Eagles Nest Terrace. So I know a little bit about signage and parking and issues in Narragansett, being here for many, many more years. And in fact, when I was about 17-years-old, the summer I was down here, Wayne, Drefy, and Richard, they hired me at Georges de Galley to be their parking lot attendant. And it was a great job, I was outside all the time, every day. And, you know, it was a beautiful place to work. Anyone wants to find a wonderful place. In fact, he's actually has people, he's nice enough to bring people from abroad to help them out this summer. So, good job, Kevin. He's following his dad's legacy. So I always like to give plugs. But, so, they have a parking lot attendant there to keep people who go into their lots from going into the beach, because there's only so many spaces available. So I was there, I'd take out a chair, I'd walk around the grounds and make sure that when people parked their cars, they were going into Georges de Galley and not to the beach. And when they left, they couldn't take all their beach gear, you know, they couldn't get a bag of clam cakes from the takeout, grab them, and play games, and then walk to the beach. That wasn't allowed. So I think, and the CSOs, I, when I was doing the signage study, quasi makeshift study on my own, touring Ocean Road and Narragansett Ave and Memorial Square, when I went down Memorial Square Boulevard, they have a two-hour limited signage, two-hour limited signage, not three hours. And when I'm going down there throughout the summer, inevitably, those cars are packed, jammed. So signage, you know, and this is why I had to go to the Capitol three times and testify, signage in itself is not the answer. It's not gonna be the answer. People will take a risk, and they'll park their car there. If they got hit with the $50 ticket, they don't care. So what I, and I, and Casey has reached out to me and goes, Al, what's some ideas? Give me some idea. Well, you know, I shared with some ideas with her, and she said about, you know, she was nice enough to meet with Donna, and they thought about putting signs up there. But then Lindsay Holmes, and it was either Lindsay or Christine Holmes reached out to me, or they messaged on Facebook. I just read their responses, they said, the signage, you know, it's not really that, you know, people are gonna be parking there. So, you know, to go to a restaurant or whatever it might be. So what I would recommend is have one CSO designated at that spot. I mean, if Georges de Galley, a restaurant, can afford to have a parking lot attendant there, then I think the town in Narragansett should be able to afford to do that. And not only that, when I lived on, when I had a place, we had a place on Bonnet View Drive. Well, when you go down Bonnet View Drive, it's West Quake Beach. Guess what? The association has a, they have a parking lot, they have a beach attendant there. So if you go down to that beach, the houses, only a certain number of houses could actually go onto that. They go, sorry, you're not on one of the roads, so we got turned away. So this is a small association, and they had a guy standing out there. So I think it'd be well worth considering to hiring, have one of those CEOs hired, and have he or she sit there and just watch that the people who park there are gonna be using the playground.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Celiberto? Oops.
Catherine Celiberto, 480's Court. You received my email. I don't know that you can amend a street parking ordinance to cover a playground parking lot. I'm also concerned about just this one lot having a three-hour limit. I don't think there should be any limits in our parking lots for our playgrounds or parks. There's a problem here, obviously, a serious problem, and we have to figure out how to deal with it. You know, here's the funny thing, now, where's Jim? He's gonna speak to a Boone Street Market. They have valet parking. I've been by there, I can't tell you how many times. They have spaces in their lot, and yet people will go over and they'll park in the Boone Street parking lot. Why? Because I guess they don't want to pay for a valet. Maybe they could put a sign out, complimentary valet, and maybe people will pull into the lot. They've also leased a lot on the corner of Rodman and Boone. Nobody goes in it, because they have this vague sign when it's there, valet parking. They need a big sign, because people need direction, let's face it. Boone Street, you know, Market, Valet Parking, proceed to the entrance. And that way they can, you know, send their cars down there. These people, they just, they're ignoring them, they're ignoring us, they're ignoring everything. And it's, I don't, really, this is a behavior modification thing we have to get into here. Al's idea is not that bad, you know, they pull in, the way you're going, you're gonna play basketball? No, okay, out, you know, that type of thing. It gets worse in the summer. The other thing is people park in the handicap spot every single day. Nothing aggravates me more than somebody parking in a handicap spot when they're not handicapped. I have called the police a number of times, Casey has called. I've got pictures on my phone right now, five days with people parked in the handicap spot. And I would like, I sent Mr. Chief Racus an email, just buzz by once, you know, a day. You're gonna get, you're gonna be able to tag somebody, I think it's $150. I think it's a real moneymaker. People don't like tickets, but they are moneymakers for the town. And plus, you know, you shouldn't be parking in a handicap spot if you're not handicapped. So, you know, we've got a number of different issues going on here, on there. And if you're going to have a Parking Subcommittee meeting, I'd like it to be, you know, maybe at like 6:00, so parents could attend. And I'd like the date to be put out there, so people will know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, gentleman in the back?
State Fair, 23 Perkins Avenue. I wish this came up earlier because I hate to even speak at this time in the evening. However, this ordinance, I think, is one that is valued. I live on the park, and in fact, I do see that people are often just leaving their car and walking someplace else. But I also think there's a larger issue, which I hope we'll deal with, and that's we have ordinance that we don't enforce. Parking around that area, we don't enforce. Cogent Street, it abuts behind some of those businesses, no parking on either side. Yet no one will enforce no parking, according to someone who just asked for something to be done about it. The handicap space in that lot, no enforcement. And of course, these safety issues are a liability to the town. We've allowed too many cars within that area by giving people the right to have large occupancies that probably shouldn't have been approved. And we also have issues that we cannot seem to enforce our noise ordinance or our yelling in the street ordinance. Newport has done it. Providence has done it. Cranston has done it. It's not that hard. You don't simply have a rule that in fact residents have to call and we don't do anything. The rule for shouting in the street is 10 seconds, in Providence, if I'm not mistaken. We have them yelling into the street for hour after hour after hour. And we're told, well, it's a residential rule. Well, they're yelling into a residential zone. We can't cite someone for 55 decibels. We can't cite them for 65. We can't cite them for 71. When I heard Mr. Callahan mention that in fact we can amend these things 100 feet from the residence, if a person of normal hearing can hear it, then it's breaking the noise ordinance. 200 feet, or cars, windows shut, you know, 100 feet, windows open 20 feet. But we can't do it for, at all! And it's just frustrating. So I mentioned this once before, that we should do something about the parking situation there, because it is unsafe all around that area, and the park especially. But, you know, if we don't do anything about our ordinances, then it just frustrates the neighbors. It just frustrates them that in fact this is just a game. They're just telling us that in fact we did something. I even like the little signs we've got on Boone and also on South Pier that tell me how fast I'm going. I would mention in good faith that in fact, by the time I get to the sign moving up on Rodman, I'm breaking, and so I'm reading 15 to 17 miles an hour. So maybe in front of the park would be a better place, not an emergency. But in fact, it is a safety issue, obviously. So my time's up, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, gentleman in the back, and then I'll work my way over here. Thank you.
Mark Crook, 161 Boone Street. So I have lived across from the playground since 1979. So I think I have a long history of information for you relative to the parking situation at the playground and around there. And this has been a longstanding issue as far as parking in that area, especially when the games, the summer games are there. And those games happen during the week and on weekends. They happen from about 5:00 on till 9:00 at, 9:00 at night. As I said, this has been an issue for numerous, numerous years. Now you have restaurants in the area, you know, and Boone Street Market has exasperated the parking situation there. So we literally have people parking in our driveway trying to get to the game. You know, I had a very aggressive encounter with one person that was literally blocking my driveway. So this is a real issue, and it's not an issue about who is parking in the playground spaces. Are they using the playground? Are they going to walk their dog? Are they going to the beach? Are they going to Boone Street Market or Bike Stop? You know, this is a much larger issue of parking in that area. There simply is not enough parking for the basketball games, the people using the playground, and the restaurants that are now in that area. So when you look at this issue, please expand it to what the real issue is. And it's not just 10 or 12 spaces at the playground. That is, that is a waste of your time on trying to regulate those 10 or 12 spaces. You need a more comprehensive plan of that whole area if you intend on solving this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. And gentleman over here, do you want to speak?
Again, David Cousich, 100 Seculode Drive.
Again, David Cousichanti, 100 Secular Drive. You may not allow me to speak much, but because I'm not talking specifically to that Boone Street thing, I was just saying, so there's a Subcommittee for Parking now. So a previous speaker spoke to, like, I was just looking on the website. Are they, are the meetings listed on the website? Can we attend those or? That was one of my questions.
If you want to list out your questions, then we can answer them.
No, that was my question.
Oh.
And the other one's a comment. I'm a member of the Narragansett Surfcasters. We're a great organization. We do a lot for the community. And so we've noticed, you know, that signs are coming up out of, like, out of nowhere now for no parking in many areas, like right near Rights of Way, you know, with access to the sea. And these small houses now are being replaced by very large, beautiful homes. And all of a sudden, the residents are complaining that people are parking there to go fishing or surfing and then bang, you know, signs go up. And one of the examples I could give you is on Connet Avenue. You know, there weren't any signs there and now all of a sudden, there's no parking signs there. So, you know, it restricts our access to the sea and we're the ones that are maintaining the rights of way. In fact, I cut the lawn myself on the one behind Spain, which is on High Street. And some of the neighbors are friendly and some of them are very unfriendly. Even if I'm cutting the lawn, I went going fishing there. So I just wanted to point that out and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who hasn't spoken, wish to, so? Okay, with that in mind, I'll turn the floor back over to Counselor Vignali and Counselor Durkin. I know you're on this Subcommittee, so I don't know if you want to answer the gentleman's question in regards to the timing and advertising, the layout of this committee.
Well, it's not a workshop, it's a Subcommittee. So I don't know, is it an advertised event? I don't think it is. It's a, it's a Subcommittee that.
It's a Subcommittee of the Council.
Yeah.
And some town employees, but it doesn't require public notification, I don't believe. James?
You could post it on your calendar, have the public can attend if they'd like, or if they might be the best thing to do based on the comments, just to have it allow, just it publicized.
Yeah, I thought, since it was just two of us, we didn't have to post it, but I don't mind posting it.
I don't think you have to. You're correct.
I'd like to hear people's opinion, to tell you the truth. I mean, it's, that's helpful, so.
We could meet as a Subcommittee and then the whole Council has a workshop after that.
Yeah, well, maybe we should do that.
And they could advertise that.
Is that good?
Just come back with some, some input.
Yeah. Let's do that. And then we can advertise it properly and be prepared for it.
Okay. So then.
Can we do all that in two weeks?
I don't think we can do that in two weeks.
Huh? You don't want to do it before the next meeting?
I don't know if we can do it in two weeks.
Yeah.
We can try.
You can have your Subcommittee between now and then, probably. But we won't be able to workshop it between now and then.
Okay. All right, well.
Would you agree? Yeah?
So I guess we'll just Subcommittee it and we can post that. I don't mind posting that. If anybody wants to come, that's fine.
I'll circulate the dates that are available for those who are on it. And then once we finalize it, I'll get the thumbs up from you guys and we'll publicize it.
Okay.
Okay. So let's see if I can do this right. So there's a motion to amend the current ordinance. So is there a motion to amend item K1 to refer this to the Parking Subcommittee as written for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And now that that has been amended, we will now vote on the amended agenda item. So is there a motion? Do you guys want to put like a specific date or, in this? Or it's up to you?
No.
I wouldn't do that because I have to contact staff.
Okay.
And review other reports before.
Can we just say soon as possible?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll set it up very soon. I'll send you the dates.
Date uncertain.
I'll send you the dates tomorrow.
Sorry.
I'll send you some dates tomorrow.
Okay. So with that, is there a motion to refer? So we've already amended it, so, and now the, so read it. Okay. So is there a motion to refer item K1 as written to the Parking Subcommittee?
Motion to refer. Second.
Moved by Durkin, seconded by Counselor Torialde.
If you could say the motion as amended to, just for clarity for Sarah. The motion.
A motion and amended. As amended.
Okay. Is there a motion to refer this to the Parking Subcommittee as amended?
So moved.
To a date uncertain.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Onto the last agenda item. Is there a motion to schedule a workshop with the Town Council, Planning Board, and Town Staff to discuss one potential amendment of 15% modifications to dimensional regulations passed on or about December 18th, 2023, to revert to dimensions prior to December 18th, 2023? And two potential amendment to provide clarity within zoning ordinance in Town. Staff on limitation of maximum of one person per bedroom and not to exceed five unrelated persons per dwelling.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Colonies. Any proposed dates of this workshop? Oh.
Do you have some in mind? Because we have no idea if the Planning Board would be available on any of those. So it would be great if, maybe we, if you had a couple in mind, you might be able to check a few things now, but I don't think we'd be able to confirm with them.
Okay.
Wednesday next meeting, would that be possible to do it before their meeting scheduled?
Nope. So I guess then my, my question is, how would we go about recommending scheduling when we don't have any definite dates, but then maybe Counselor, or Mr. Tierney is getting additional information?
Can I, can I ask Jim a question?
Sure.
James Callahan.
Counselor Durkin has a question for Solicitor Callahan.
James, is this one of the things where it takes, you, you ask them to take a look at it or schedule it and it's a 45-day window?
No. This is purely a workshop that you discussed in the past few months.
Before public hearing.
Just to get feedback from Staff, Planning Board. And you could also, you could also say you want to make, amend the motion and say, a workshop will be scheduled at the convenience of all parties after discussions internally, something like that.
Okay.
That way it's posted, it's going to be posted anyway because I assume all five of you would be there, probably some of the Planning Board. Doesn't have to be all five or, or however many it is. It depends on schedules.
Could, the Council could, with, with not knowing the availability of the Planning Board, you could always set a date. Once you set the date, you can always continue it. You reschedule, you can always reschedule.
And it is also a workshop.
Yeah, it's a workshop.
So it's not the end-all-be-all, it is the start of conversations. Right. So for instance, if the Planning Board should not be present at the date scheduled, but some Town Staff is available, we can have the discussion with whoever's able to make it at that time and then we would continue the workshop to, just as an idea.
That would be the Council's decision.
And that's what's hell with a workshop. It's not, doesn't have those strict requirements that the actual zoning amendment and zoning enabling statute has. You can be more fluid, which I think is your goal and the public's goal.
Okay. So any thoughts or comments?
I'm just curious, does it have to be at the time the Planning Board is meeting or could it be on another date, another date different than that? Okay.
Yep. But so of course, that is the, extending the courtesy to make sure that.
Exactly.
Town Staff and Planning Board are available at the time in which we schedule. So I like James's recommendation on, on scheduling this to the date determined at the convenience of all parties. Does that work? So we would amend. I don't know if we would necessarily have to amend this, James, is that correct? Because we're scheduling, but we don't, it's not particular, it's not specifically mentioning to a date certain.
Right.
So we can just schedule it for?
If you pick, maybe.
Well, actually, how can we schedule it for a date uncertain?
Pick a date of a Council meeting and do it beforehand. And if it works, if it works based on your, their schedules, your schedules, that's one thing. If it doesn't, then you can, we can figure out another date.
So, so would it be possible, like, for us to pick three dates and bring them over to the Planning Board to see if any of those three dates works for them? I mean, would that be a more efficient way of doing it instead of everyone waiting on hearing from everyone?
Yeah. Could we like vote on these three dates and then one of the dates?
Right, so if we all know we can meet on these three particular dates, then it's just a matter of them.
Right. Ms. Sabo, when's the July meeting of the Planning Board? I'm sorry, I should have asked you.
For a date certain, why don't you pull the item and move it to the July 7th meeting and we'll have everybody on board. We'll know a perfect date for it. Unless it's urgent and you really want to get it done, but it looks like we may end up having to reschedule whatever date we pick. Between now and then, for scheduling purposes.
Does that work with you guys? Okay.
That work?
Yeah, that works.
Great. Thank you.
So now I just need to know how it is and I'm going to articulate that back to you and to the general public. So we're saying we're going to schedule this for July 7th. No? Continue it. Thank you. So a motion to continue this, agenda item K2, to Town Council meeting on July 7th. Okay. Any final thoughts? Good. All those in favor?
We've got to move it.
Oh, sorry, is there, is there a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you.
Second.
To move this to July 7th. Thank you. Moved by Counselor Colonies, seconded by Counselor Vignali. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Is there a motion to adjourn at 9:22 PM?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Have a great night.